Good afternoon, it is morning at six.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call our regular meeting of County Council for Tuesday, June the thirteenth to order. May the meeting, would you please give us an invocation, may we all stand and remain standing for the first meeting.
Yes, great. Our dear county heavenly Father, to acknowledge you as the one in whom we live, move, and have our being. We thank you for being the provider of every good and perfect gift. We thank you for another opportunity to serve in this position as county council persons. And we just invite your presence as we begin this meeting. And if you would just abide with us as we go through every agenda item, give us wisdom, understanding, and clarity of thought as we go through these decisions on this agenda, that we will make decisions according to your will. We thank you for blessing us, that we are able to be good stewards of what you've blessed us with, and to be able to get very close to a balanced budget. Help us to always be fair, kind, loving, and considerate in all of our actions. We ask that you continue to bless our many women who serve in uniform, and especially those who are serving in harm's way. We thank you for the veteran that has served thirty-four years and is with us tonight. Thank you for giving him longevity. Continue to bless him to continue to live out his purpose that you've blessed him with. Bless all of us according to your will. His in all blessings be thanked and asked for in the precious name of Jesus, your son and our Savior. Amen.
Tonight will be led in our faith allegiance by U.S. retired Air Force veteran, Mr. Tony Myers, who served our country from November nineteen fifty to May nineteen eighty-four. By my math, that's thirty-four years. For honorable service, he was a fighter pilot stationed at Shaw Air Force Base upon retirement. He decided to make something his home and he currently lives in my district, County Council District Number Six. Thank you for your service. Please join me.
Praise be to the life of the United States of America, and to a republic for its descendants, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any agenda, Ms. Blanahan?
Yes, sir, there is one change in the vote. I'm removing item number three.
On our own business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the amended agenda, Mr. Cruzarca. I, okay. We have a motion, have a session to approve the amended agenda in a discussion. Hearing all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I have a motion to approve our minutes for my regular meeting for Tuesday, May twenty-third. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First item on the agenda, RZ twenty-three eleven, located at fourteen forty-nine and fourteen eighty-five Oswego Highway. Where should we move, Ms. Ruben?
Good evening, how are you, gentlemen, for planning staff? RZ twenty-three eleven is requested fourteen forty-nine and fourteen eighty-five Oswego Highway. Should result approximately nine point nine seven acres of property to span two separate tracks, to micro cultural conservation to general commercial. These are the tracks in question, they're just south of the intersection of Bruin-Tinray and Oswego Highway on the east side of the road. They are currently undeveloped, heavily wooded, and this area is predominantly agricultural and residential in the area. The request is to rezone the property simply for, at this point, they have a potential buyer for the property. They're trying to prepare the zoning designation in place to make more advantages for that buyer. That's our understanding from the planning commission. We would know that in this particular area, there is public water available, but there is not public sewer, so that would be a limiting factor in development of the property. General commercial is our widest used zone that is permissible. This is the general pattern of zoning in the area. This is actually at the northeasternmost edge of the county in terms of where we transition from suburban development to agricultural preservation. The area you see at the top of the map is green, to the bottom is the yellow, the yellow is suburban development. But that yellow-orange circle that you see at the intersection is actually a priority commercial mixed-use node. So when we look at this zoning request, we do look at what the comprehensive land use plan says in terms of suitability for the request. In this instance, it is in close proximity to what is considered a fairly major rural intersection. So a rezoning designation as area two of commercial districts such as general commercial is generally supported by the comprehensive plan. The planning commission did recommend approval of this request, changing the designation to commercial designation is generally supported by the plan. We would however note that any future development would have to go through this by plan review process. It would have to go through all of the necessary commercial permitting and any environmental permitting and clutchment permits through DOT. So this would simply put the zoning entitlement in place, it would not approve any development plan. You have any questions to add?
Please.
If they know the use, that they already have a potential buyer, and I notice that it's two separate parcels divided by a road or a future road, why would that be two parts?
I would have to defer to the applicant. The comment about there being a potential buyer for the property for marketing purposes cannot be made in precision. At the time of publication of the report, we didn't have any definitive users for our users designated for the property. We do have the applicant's here, if you'd like to speak to them, but I'm not able to answer that question.
If they have a potential buyer for one of them, while they're rezoning two, and if they know the use, that the potential buyer's going to use, maybe zone it to a lesser zoning district like Limbix or something.
There were some conversations with planning staff about the suitability of both of those districts. Absent knowing exactly what the end user was, we did move forward with what the applicant had applied for, which was general commercial.
Move approval for reading?
Thank you.
It's been moved improperly secondly, we have first reading on RZ twenty-three eleven, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First reading fast. Under new business, I have a request for approval of a proclamation claiming June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Santee Lynch Regional Council of Government for County, which includes Clarence, Suntory, Lee, and Kershaw. Soon, second, it's been moved improperly secondly, that we approve a proclamation claiming June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank you for this, since I'm one of the elders here, and that you know that you shouldn't be abusing me.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Count me in that number as well, I think. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next item on the agenda, ordinance number twenty-three nine eighty-eight, third reading on our... Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Mr. McBrine, first reading and ordinance authorized the sale of property.
Mr. Chairman, this is Council twenty-three nine eighty-nine, as ordinance approved, the contract for sale of the property located at Fourteenth Law Range. It's an offer of a hundred and one thousand dollars for the property. I think that's a good price, of course it requires three readings of public hearing. This is first reading. The details of the contract are, which is attached to the ordinance. If I have any questions you may have.
Is that the property where the old Veterans Administration officers?
Yes, sir.
Remove. Sorry. I will motion in second to approve ordinance twenty-three nine eighty-nine, first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And now, ordinance number twenty-three nine eighty-eight.
Mr. Nixon. Mr. Chair, Councilmember, good evening, this is the budget ordinance related to the general obligation bonds for capital purchases. We have gone and covered that information in our budget workshop. There are no changes since second reading, sir.
Remove third reading. Second, it's been moved improperly secondly, then we have third reading on our capital bond, ordinance twenty-three nine eighty-eight. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The third reading on our operating budget, ordinance number twenty-three nine eighty-seven.
Mr. Chair, in the previous meeting, we can't account for the budget workshop, there was one amendment that was proposed, so we'd like to make that announcement tonight. We now have a proposed balanced budget at sixty million four hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. The change that was made by council tonight was to appropriate up to two hundred and fifty thousand additional dollars, which would increase the amount from six hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars to nine hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars to be used from the council's fund balance for the purpose of making the adjustments in the share starting salary up to forty-five thousand dollars, which will mirror the city's effort or law enforcement. Certainly, we will follow this information closely with support of the chair to see how that might appropriate. That's the request from staff tonight to again increase the adjusted amount for the fund balance of two hundred, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a balanced budget of sixty million four hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. So that's what we present tonight for third reading of the county's general, excuse me, general fund budget.
Move approval. Second, it's been moved improperly secondly, by that we have third reading with the amendment of ordinance number twenty-three nine eighty-seven, which is our budget. Any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, from the committee reports, Mr. Nixon reported out the results of our budget workshop. I will report that we did have an executive session. When we came out of executive session, we voted to extend our county administrator's contract for four years commencing on July first, twenty twenty-three. So congratulations, Mr. Nixon, on the extension of your contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Council.
Report from council members on other meetings, trainings, and or conferences. Hearing none, monthly reports, Mrs. Blanahan?
There's one month of reporting, you're packing in this, I think, first.
County administrative reports.
Mr. Chair, it's likely to announce that the next Monday evening, we are proposing a joint meeting with the school district to continue the conversation as it relates to the school's request. Details are being worked out now, but it looks like it will be Monday evening. Time has not been selected, recreation department will be the location for this joint meeting. So more information to follow, I just wanted to announce that publicly, but that's what we're for. And again, I would like to thank council for your continued support. I'm excited about the future of Suntory County, and certainly excited about being a part of the effort moving forward. Thank you for your continued support each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Coming now to our public comment portion of our agenda. Citizens desire to speak to council or limited to no more than three minutes. Comments may be made through the chairman. And any questions that you may be, that you may have, will be answered after the public comments, after the close of our meeting. So I declare a public comment portion of our agenda open. Anyone wishing to speak to council, please proceed to the podium. State your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Lorraine Muhammad, and I live in Dazzell. And my comments are concerning the road conditions out here. They are deplorable, there is no maintenance. The last time the road was scratched, they dumped a lot of sand on one end, but it wasn't spread out, it was sand, beach sand, dumped. On the other ends, on the beach orchard end, there's a big hole that you have to avoid before you commence to turn on the keystone. And there are semis that ride very fast and very close. And sometimes to avoid getting hit, you have to drive into the ditch that's there. And then that's not maintained. So every time there's a hard rain, you've got what's in the road that is deep. Sometimes there are puddles that you need a canoe to get through. And we don't want to live like that, everybody's paying a little taxes. Everybody's having to deal with that, and I saw on TV a couple of weeks ago, Channel nineteen, where there were residents in Suntory County that were complaining about it. But Channel nineteen couldn't do anything except expose it. The people that are going through it need to have something done about it. So that's why my husband and I come here. He knows the ramifications and the detriment that's done to the vehicles. I just wanted to explain what I have to drive through. It's a half a mile ride from my house to almost to Eden Road. Sometimes it takes ten or fifteen minutes, the roads are so bad. The only way to avoid it is to go all the way around and come up on Black River. But then you still got to avoid the semi and all the ditches and the ruts that go across the road. And a lot of that on keystone is downhill. So that's my presentation, and I thanks for the listen.
Thank you, Mr. Muhammad.
I keep my distance, ma'am.
Next person, please.
Your name? My wife covered the subject, but I don't want to speak about it.
And your name, sir?
Deke Huzan. My wife covered the subject that I don't want to speak about, but I want to know who do I speak to concerning it? All of the residents, the people living there, they're complaining about the sand and the sand. But we don't know how to go about addressing it or having something done. I've owned that property and lived there for over twenty years. I've seen it. And it's clearly getting worse. Nothing is getting better about it. Who do I speak to? I assume this community is quite clear.
I just wanted to know which road is it, I've heard it mentioned.
Canary Road.
It's Canary Road.
Between Canary and the...
Yeah, that was one of the roads that was on the penny, we are very aware of it. And public works has this rating. And I know that you could speak with us after the meeting, but I feel compelled to at least say that we are aware of it. And a part of it is probably in my district, and maybe Mr. Bailey's district as well. But we are very familiar with those problems, and it has not fallen on deaf ears. It was on the penny project, but the penny failed, you know, everything costs money. And so we're, you know, thank you for coming to, you know, express your sentiments about it. Surely, county administration will pass it on to our public works division about how the sand and everything is piled up. And hopefully, you'll be able to at least alleviate that. But, you know, the next time you hear of the penny project, you know, try to support it and get the word out to help us so that we can have, you know, the funds to get around through the whole county. I think everybody up here knows just how important those roads are, and we, you know, we know, and we really do care.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next person, please.
Hello, good evening, I am Amanda E. Price, I'm here representing the LGBT community. It is Pride Month, and we are going to have a Suntory Pride on September thirtieth in front of the courthouse. This is not going to be, there's not enough people for a parade or anything like that. It's to simply demonstrate that we have a lot of LGBT people in Suntory County, Suntory City, and get the word out and try and dispel, dispel a lot of the wrong information that's out there about our community. I myself, on the record, I'm intersex and transgender. I was born with female organs and didn't was not aware of it until I was about ten years in the United States Air Force, when we figured out what was totally going on. As I can say, I didn't realize about coming here until last night, so there's no other committee proclamation or anything. I'm trying to see those, if anyone would like to possibly come forward and talk at it. I sent everybody emails last year, a lot of which were emails got lost. So that's really it, I have small flyers if anybody wants any of them. And this landing has my contact information if anybody would like further information from me. So that's really all I need to hear from you, if you want to word it out, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Um, thank you, Councilor Tasha Gardner. Thank you for all your support with our cleanups that we're having in Suntory County. This Saturday, June seventeenth, is the Another City Clean Up, starting on the seventeenth. So if you have not reached out to Bishop Glenn Button or Mr. Karen, then please pick up their bags and all your supplies and support our efforts to clean up Suntory and litter in our areas. We do appreciate your support and all of your efforts to help us clean up Suntory. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Al Hamal, I'm from out of State Bird Area. Been here several times, complaining about the roads in the State Bird Area also. I've heard all of the answers so far is waiting on, in Texas. We on a list, we on, I mean, it's starting to be, I'm fourteen years in. My neighbor is twenty-six years in, hearing the same thing over and over and over and over. State Bird Area pays a lot of taxes, and the roads in that area is horrible, horrible. It came just this year and paid maybe a hundred feet that was real bad. That's ridiculous for all the taxes others that they collect. If you guys don't have the money to spend taxes, passing a budget, put it in the budget. I mean, we paying the taxes, but nothing is being done. We can blame, even be personally. I've been up here numerous times, I got water coming off the road in my yard. I just called whoever the new lady is, Mr. Gary's pop, right? I've, four times already, I had dirt falling in my yard, the water keep washing it out. I called her and said, okay, you guys need to bring dirt because I'm trying to pay money out of my pocket that the road is washing the dirt out of my yard. She said, no, we're not doing that, that's on you. Why should I be paying out my pocket to fix something that's coming out the road that the county won't come out and fix? I got house structure damage that been done from the water. Detached garage structure that been done for the water. I've came up here and complained, and nothing is being done. We paid, my water bill is higher in that area than my sister-in-law that lives in town that pays city water and sewers. And all I pay is for water, and my bill is double her bill. Why is that? So we pay, we pay a lot more in that area than the same we being neglected. I'm not sure who is over the State Bird Area now, but we need something done out there. We shouldn't be paying taxes and nothing is being done out there. Now, county is sitting collecting taxes, I'm not saying you're not doing anything with the money, but nothing is being done out there. And we appreciate that someone could take the time and put some type of attention out in the State Bird Area, because we really do need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Good evening, Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Forgive me if I read through my cell phone. Thank you guys for your service.
You made a mistake, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, my name is Dee Hoen.
Hoen?
Hoen, H-O-E-H-N. Thank you for your service and advocacy for our community. Mr. Washington, thank you for inviting me this evening. Again, my name is Dee Hoen, and I stand before you to request your help and advocacy regarding the concerning presence of PFOS contamination within Suntory County specifically around identified and unidentified areas next to Shaw Air Force Base. These substances are a highly persistent group of synthetic chemicals that we noticed. Forever chemicals, I hope that you're already very familiar with that. We did make Teflon out of that before, and they've been wrappers of things like that. However, they are toxic and they do not break down. These substances have been linked to numerous health concerns, including cancer, immune system disorders, as well as reproductive problems. Recent studies have shown that our communities are very much at risk due to the PFOS contamination secondary to the use of firefighting phone at Shaw Air Force Base several years ago, I think like thirty years ago. As a resident in Florence County, and also a property owner in Suntory, we're adversely affected because I own an RV park north of that. It's not contaminated because we're high in water. However, I'm coming to speak to you as an advocate for the larger community. My first concern is the methodology of communication with the public from Shaw Air Force Base. My second concern was the use of data statistics and acronyms in a way that made it difficult for people within our community and our constituents to understand. Also, sometimes within that meeting, which I'm sure that you guys understood, it also entered our constituents, and they felt like they were at a gridlock, and so I didn't feel like we made a lot of progress. This component of our committee advisory for PFOS is seventy parts per trillion. That was changed recently last year to four parts per quadrillion. Our US military is choosing to only use the earlier level, twenty sixteen level, to consider that to be actionable if something is contaminated. As I discussed with the, I see that I have forty seconds left, may I have another two minutes? You said five.
Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Okay. I would remind everyone that this is a legacy problem, and Shaw Air Force Base is a past tree as they purchase firefighting phones and bring them. So as people in our community approach you, they're religiously and rightfully angry, and their concerns are very valid. But I would also encourage you to remind you that our men and women know that Shaw are not personally responsible for this because it is a legacy issue. So my first concern is the methodology of communication with the public. Second concern was use of data. Every state has a maximum contamination level, and they determine within their legislature to decide what is actionable. I'm not sure what our NCL is right now, but our legislators do know about PFOS currently. And there are super fronts in every state connected that our legislators, governors, and our presidents sign off on. As Mr. Washington may have suggested in the restoration advisory board meeting, we need to possibly contact some of those representatives. There is a larger class action state that the person I spoke with is helping to work on. It's one hundred and fifty-three billion dollars. It involves larger constituencies all over the world against two of them. We are too small, as Suntory County possibly may not be represented in that. But if you are interested in learning more about that, it's in our multi-district litigation court in Charleston. But if you are interested in learning more about that, it's in our multi-district probation, um, court in Charleston. Given the severity of the situation, the complexity, the lethal constraints we have to navigate, I'm asking for you guys to take immediate action with Bridge and partner with Shaw's Restoration Advisory Board. They are ongoing with their, um, their ability to assess the situation. However, I don't know that those, the way that they're going about it is, uh, as frequent as it needs to be or as transparent as it needs to be. I would propose that you invite our congressional leaders, Ralph Norman, Tim Scott, Miss DeGraham, to a joint meeting with Shaw so that you might submit a request as a partner Restoration Advisory Board to have five action groups led by military civilians. Each working group can investigate, problem solve, and present to the rap ways to address the PR issue, the urgent health concerns, real estate impact, legal process, and legislation. Thank you guys so much for your time and for your service to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just saying, just before you leave, and Mr. Washington is aware of this. I have arranged a meeting with twenty fighter wing commander and his engineers, and Mr. Washington and I and Mr. Nixon are going. Uh, we have also talked about writing letters to our congressional, uh, members, but I have asked that before we do that, we meet with Shaw, that meeting has been arranged.
Wonderful.
And we will be, when is it? It's, it's gonna be on, in July, but it's gonna be between us so we can get a better understanding of what's going on and what they're doing to mitigate the PFOS. And keeping in mind that those people out of Shaw, they are not responsible for it, but the government is responsible for clearing it up, so.
Yes, sir.
Just know, but Mr.?
And I would also follow up with just information in the email, and I can forward that to you. And also, Leanne Fogg, Yonka is a part of Gail and the School, and she's their intermediary that keeps things legal. And so she captures your requests. So I'll try to have as many of those, um, on your side as you can. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing that public comment portion is closed, there's no one. No one, Mr. Chair. I see.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Rivers. I live on one sweet East Patricia Drive. I also have a concern about the roads, about the potholes. They're really deep. And the children must start to put stones and toys in there, and when the rain, it covers it up. No one can see what's in the potholes. And there's also a natural gas leak. You can smell the gas from the road going down Patricia Drive, East Patricia Drive. And I was wondering if someone could take a look at that also.
That's my area. I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Before you leave, let me get your phone number, please.
Okay. Okay, and it's also on, on Orange Street. And by the street is like a big pothole also that needs to be covered.
I'll take care of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Public comment section is closed. Moving for a general second, the movement about the second, if that will. I can, or, just to clarify. Or essential service. Just to clarify, just to clarify.